Okay, now which icon is the one that's the internet?
Yeah, you had it too.
But.
I know.
Yeah, but which.
Where does it go?
Well, I thought that was the top part.
Yeah, that I know.
But he just tried.
Once I get there.
Thank you for the flag, Larry.
Yes, you can, I can give you a copy of the agenda on paper, or you can log in into the, our website, pvaz.net, and follow the agenda through our website. It will also be on your screens as Casey presents the webex.
So we can't use these. Cool.
If he can hit it fixed.
I got a copy. Get on, you're on your phone, aren't you, Ivan? You can get on the thing for that.
Yeah, I don't know if Channel 56 is up right now, but we're just gonna be taking a couple minutes, waiting on Casey here to get us, get us live on the internet, so that's what we're waiting on. At least that's what I believe we're waiting on for that.
You could do it individually. This, if you want. Enough to attend this and follow that way. Not able to vote, but you can still open up the individual.
Call the order, Town of Prescott Valley Council Meeting, April 9th, 2020. Welcome, everyone. For those that are in attendance, if you'd like to, please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Hopefully, everyone at home is seeing us on either their TV or the internet. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Councilmember Packard.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Present.
Mayor Palguda.
Present.
We have a Cora Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. And just for those that are watching this, we don't have our, council doesn't have this tonight, so we'll be doing all motions via.
Roll call.
Vote, vote will be all verbal.
Yeah.
So, we'll just move on to item four, and just start with our proclamations. I'm not sure who's reading this, if the clerk's up, but first one up is Tai Chi and Qi Gang Day.
World Tai Chi and Qi Gang Day. Whereas world Tai Chi and Qi Gang Day is celebrated in 80 nations annually, and whereas the Tai Chi and Qi Gang are ancient Chinese arts that provide health benefits to people of all ages, including stress reduction, improved focus, coordination, flexibility, and balance, and brings people together in harmony with the environment, and whereas the world Tai Chi and Qi Gang Day is always celebrated around the world on the last Saturday of April each year. Now, therefore, I call Palguda, Mayor of Prescott Valley, to hereby proclaim April 20, 2020 as World Tai Chi and Qi Gang Day in Prescott Valley, Arizona, and encourage our citizens to help create a wave of healing energy by joining in this worldwide event.
Thanks, ma'am. We're just gonna keep you busy tonight with these, so next one up is Fly Your American Flag, or Mr. Tarkowski, are you taking this one?
Fly Your American Flag Month, whereas the nation is in the midst of an epic fight against the invasive COVID-19 virus, and whereas the Town of Prescott Valley and its citizens are making every effort to flatten the curve through social distancing and other unprecedented measures and sacrifices to do our part to lessen the effects of the COVID-19, and whereas the Town of Prescott Valley is designating April 2020 as Fly Your American Flag Month to demonstrate unity and support to our nation's fight against COVID-19, and whereas by flying the American flag, we also demonstrate in honor the efforts and sacrifice of our essential workers, medical community, and first responders who are putting their lives on the line fighting this virus. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Cal Palguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, and on behalf of the Town of Prescott Valley, or the Town Council, do hereby proclaim April 2020 as Fly Your American Flag Month in the Town of Prescott Valley, and encourage our citizens to fly the American flag throughout the month of April in demonstration of our resolve to the nation that we will overcome this challenging pandemic as a team willing to proudly show our colors.
Thank you, and for those of you that haven't seen it, I mean, head on down to the library, or check out Lakeshore, you'll see flags strewn across Lakeshore, and although we should be flying our flag every day, it's just kind of a, just a sense of community and a symbol that shows that we're in this together, and Prescott Valley, we're gonna get through this, so. Next proclamation, Arbor Day 2020.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever planted, are a source of joy and a spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I call Palguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, to hereby proclaim April 24, 2020 as Arbor Day in the Town of Prescott Valley, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this in future generations.
Thank you, ma'am. Next one up is gonna be Stem Cell and Bone Marrow Awareness Day.
Stem Cell and Bone Marrow Awareness Day. Whereas every 10 minutes, someone dies from a blood cancer, or 148 people every day, and whereas 70% of patients in need of a stem cell or bone marrow transplant are researching for an unrelated donor, and whereas there are 18,000 patients in America every day searching for a stem cell or bone marrow match, and whereas African-American, Asian, Latino, and Native American donors are underrepresented on the Be The Match registry, and whereas the Jada Bascom Foundation and Gianna Moore are raising awareness about the simplicity of joining Be The Match with the steps to marrow walks, and whereas Karen Zon Bracidi was saved by a bone marrow donor matched by the United States National Marrow Donor Program, Be The Match, and whereas the Prescott Frontier Rotary Club supports the enrollment of potential stem cell and bone marrow donors to save the lives of patients in need of a stem cell or bone marrow transplant, and whereas people between the ages of 18 and 60 who are medically eligible can beat the match by texting "life" to 61474, and whereas by donating stem cells or bone marrow, you can save a life. Now, therefore, I call Palguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, hereby proclaim April 16, 2020, a stem cell and bone marrow donation awareness, and encourage all individuals to participate in the fight against blood-related cancers.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 4E, National Library Week 2020.
Whereas today's libraries are less about what they have on the shelves and more about what they can do with and for their communities, and libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds can come together and learn alongside one another, and whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of the cities, towns, schools, and campuses that offer members of the community a welcome space and opportunities to explore new passions through technology programs and services, and whereas libraries and librarians help patrons find tools to help improve the quality of their life, promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all, are cornerstones of democracy, and whereas libraries and librarians strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve, and work to create an equitably, equitable society by providing free access to accurate information to all people, and whereas libraries are a resource for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, by offering services and educational programming that transform lives in strengthened communities, and whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore be it resolved that I, Cal Palguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, to hereby proclaim April 19 to the 25th, 2020 as National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit the library, a place where we can all belong and discover who we are because of you, libraries transform.
All right, you're almost there. Next one, Fair Housing Month.
Okay, Fair Housing Month. Whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for the construction of housing or in the provision of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, and whereas the 1968 and 1988 Federal Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing, and whereas April has traditionally been designed as Fair Housing Months in the United States. Now, therefore, I, Cal Palguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, to hereby proclaim April 2020 as Fair Housing Month in the Town of Prescott Valley, and to hereby urge all citizens of this community to comply with and show their support for the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Acts.
Nice job. And now, we're gonna be moving on to scheduled announcements and presentations, and then if someone would see who's out in the lobby, if we can invite them in for this. I don't know if anyone's there, Chief, if you can hear, thank you. Just invite, yes, whoever's out there.
The candidates.
We bring it, we're bringing them all in, correct? Yes. Yep, we're gonna bring them all in, and we're gonna be doing the selection of primary election ballot name, order.
Yes. Yes. Wait.
And clerk, while we're, actually, I'll hold off until they come on in.
Thank you, sir.
Come on in, everyone, just grab a seat, stand, do whatever you'd like. Sure you're six feet away from each other. All right. Clerk, you just wanna explain a little bit about what we've done so far?
So, Mayor, councilmembers, and the audience, as you probably already know, April, Monday April 6th was the last date to submit signature petitions for all those wishing to run for the four council vacancies this August. Despite the madness outside in the world, the Clerk's office received 12 candidate packets from very talented and experienced citizens. Now, the town contracts with Yavapai County for election services, due to the number of candidates that filed in our office, the county has stated that it is unfairly to equitably rotate the names on the ballot. So, the requesting we do, we, the requesting, we determine the order of the names by drawing lots in public, at a public meeting like this one, so what we'll do right now is, I will place the names of the candidates, but you're gonna read them and pull them out. So, I'll read the names of the candidates that are written in this piece of paper, and then we'll have our town manager, servicer, and partial person, he's gonna pull them out, read the names out loud, and we'll write them as we go to determine that order, okay?
So, clerk, just to be clear, the first one out will be the first on the list, and then we'll just go down.
Correct. We'll number them in sequence from 1 to 12.
And that's why it'll show on the ballot?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the candidates are David Dome, Steve Carros, Brenda Dickinson, Marty Grossman, Roger Kinzinger, Jeremian Queeman, Mary Williams, April Hepperty, Lori Hunt, Bart Schatzman,
Number one.
Brenda Dickinson.
Brenda Dickinson, okay.
Jeremian Queeman.
Steve Davis.
Marty Grossman.
Marty Grossman.
Elizabeth Kennedy.
Elizabeth Kennedy.
Steve Carros.
Steve Carros.
Roger Kinzinger.
Roger Kinzinger.
Mary Williams.
Mary Williams.
Bart Schatzman.
Bart Schatzman.
April Hepperty.
April Hepperty.
Lori Hunt.
Lori Hunt.
David Dom.
David Dom.
That's it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, everyone. We have our order.
Thanks for coming, everyone. All right, moving on, I don't know if anyone had it, but 5B will be deferred for this evening. It was CAFMA, ambulance white papers, and year-end report by Chief Scott Freitag for a later meeting.
The, the chief got ahold of us and would like us to postpone that?
Correct. Perfect. So, moving on, we'll just move on to item 6, Council Comments, Communications, starting on the end, Councilwoman Hunt.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you are well, and I just wanted to let everybody know again that our pvaz website, pvaz.net website is available for all the information you want, and that there is a news release on there showing how fiscally responsible our town manager is in that he has kind of froze the buzz, budget, and froze hiring, and is preparing us for potentially less revenue coming up for the new fiscal year, and we hope that that's very short-term, so I wanted to thank, thank the town manager for that, and also thank the mayor for coming up with the Fly Your Flag Month. Ours is up, and it looks great, and especially thank Heidi Dom Foster for all the information that she sends us twice a day, and on, how on top of it that she is, and I'm really proud of her, and she's doing a great job. Oh, and I also wanted to say that in light of us complying with Governor Ducey's orders, that it's not our responsibility to enforce, but we do educate, inform, and provide guidance to our citizens, and that we hope they do their best to be responsible in our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman?
Yes, all right, I'm gonna take this down for a minute. Everybody know, hopefully, everybody knows, I'm the liaison to the Humboldt Unified School District, and as you know, the district superintendent has taken a job as superintendent down in.
Marana.
Marana, okay, and it was in, we were informed today that the assistant superintendent, Cole Young, has taken a position in, why is the brain not working right now?
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, he's, he's taking it, at another location right now. Anyway, so, we're gonna have the two top positions in the school district up for vacancy. We, they've already started working on rehiring, you know, hiring somebody else and putting it out there. They're close to getting a decision on a new superintendent, because that's been in the works for about a month now, so they're working on it. The other night, there was a school board, school governing board meeting, and it was, they were able to stream it, and there was a lot of good information there, so they're still functioning, and they're working on their new budget, because of course, like us, they're gonna have a reduction in their amount of money available to them, because the state isn't making any money, so they're, they're working all those details out and the numbers out, so school will go on, it will happen for next year, and comes the new school year, we will have two new people leading the, the school district. Another thing regarding the Fly The Flags, it was brought to the attention of the two organizations. So moving on, we'll just move on to item 6, Council Comments/Communications, starting on the end, Councilwoman Hunt.
Good evening, everybody, I hope you are well. And I just wanted to let everybody know, again, that our PVAZ website, pvaz.net website, is available for all the information you want, and that there is a news release on there showing how fiscally responsible our town manager is in that he has, uh, kind of froze the buzz, budget, and froze hiring, and is preparing us for potentially less revenue coming up for the new fiscal year. And we hope that that's very short-term, so I wanted to thank, thank the town manager for that. And also, um, thank the Mayor for coming up with the Fly Your Flag Month, ours is up, and it looks great. And especially thank Heidi Dom Foster for all the information that she sends us twice a day, and on, how on top of it that she is, and I'm really proud of her, and she's doing a great job. Oh, and I also wanted to say that, um, in light of us complying with Governor Ducey's orders, that, um, it's not our responsibility to enforce, but we do educate, inform, and provide guidance to our citizens, and that we hope they do their best to be responsible in our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman?
Yes, uh, all right, I'm gonna take this down for a minute. Everybody know, hopefully, everybody knows, I'm the liaison to the Humboldt Unified School District, and as you know, uh, the district superintendent has taken a job, uh, as superintendent down in...
Marana.
Marana, okay, and it was in, we were informed today that the Assistant Superintendent Cole Young has taken a position in, uh... Why is the brain not working right now?
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, he's, he's taking it, uh, at another location right now. Anyway, so we're gonna have the two top positions in the school district, uh, up for vacancy. We, they've already started working on, uh, rehiring, you know, hiring somebody else and putting it out there. They're close to getting a decision on a new superintendent, because that's been in the works for about a month now. So they're working on it. The other night, there was a, uh, school board, school governing board meeting, and it was, they were able to stream it, and there was a lot of good information there. So, uh, they're still functioning, and they're working on, uh, their new budget, because of course, like us, they're gonna have a reduction in their, uh, amount of money available to them, because the state isn't making any money, so they're, they're working all those details out and the numbers out. So, school will go on, it will happen for next year, and comes the new school year, we will have, uh, two new people leading the, uh, the school district. Uh, another thing regarding the fly the flags, it was brought to the attention of the two organizations that put the flags up on Highway 69, that according to U.S. Flag Code, uh, they're not illuminating the flags at night. So between today and tomorrow, all the flags along Highway 69, uh, will be taken down. It's not that the organizations, which is the VFW and the American Legion Post 108, wanna take them down, it's just that they're, they found out they're not in compliance with, uh, U.S. Flag Code, so they're, they're adhering to that, uh, due to some pressure from the, uh, citizens making us aware of it. So I just want to pass that along. And we think it's a great idea that we're flying the flag, but we just can't do it because we can't comply with the flag codes. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I want to thank two groups of people. The first group I want to thank is our town employees. I went around the building thanking people that were here, keeping a safe distance, following the rules, because I don't think we should take it for granted. They're here, they're doing their job, and I want to give a special shout-out to the library, since we had that declaration today. And guess what, the front door is closed, but the drive-by door is not. You can still utilize the library, and I want to thank all the staff for doing that. I want to thank the community of Prescott Valley. I happen to be aware of all the various efforts to help people who must isolate, must not leave their homes, and how well cared for they are, because so many organizations, individuals, church, neighbors, have made sure that their needs are taken care of. How do I know? Because so many people keep checking in on me to see if I need something. So, bravo, bravo town employees, and blessings on all our citizens, our wonderful Prescott Valley.
Just to reiterate what the Vice Mayor said, just, everyone just hang in there and be positive. We're gonna get through this. We do updates, uh, every day in regards to what's going on with COVID-19, and how the town's responding, and how the county's responding. So please, if you haven't had a chance, go over to the Yavapai County Health Services website, you'll get your updated information, and as always, use that information, um, to garner your opinion on how things are going, not social media, um, at all. So, with that being said, folks, just let us know if there's any, uh, problems at home, if you're having any issues, or if there's any stress levels that are going up, and you're just not sure where to get any answers to your questions, reach out to town staff, um, via email, or you can use social media to get ahold of us. Just don't use the information from other sites, or people's opinions, or things that they've heard, to justify what's going on in town, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, just to let everybody know, uh, Cole Young got the position of Mohave County. Just to make everybody know what's going on.
So with that being said, we'll just move on. Item 7, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the town council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Council, we've all had a chance to review. Any questions, comments at this time? I believe there's one on the end with Councilwoman Hunt.
Uh, Se, I have some comments on 7F.
Okay. 7F, regular town council meeting minutes for March 26, 2020.
Yes, and I've already provided this information to the Clerk, but under the minutes, March 26, under item 8F, I would like to add, Councilmember Hunt asked to confirm that there were not actual homes proposed on any of the four-acre area, period. Mr. Parker confirmed that was correct, period. Hunt further confirmed that the developers should not begin grading on this area until after zoning is acted on in two weeks plus 30 days after, period. Parker stated that staff had advised the developer of this, comma, and that owners have the ability to grade so long as there is a SWIP plan in place. Period.
Clerk, go ahead, I was gonna, go ahead, you first, Clerk.
Well, I was pretty much gonna say probably what Ivan was gonna say, we need two motions.
So that's what I was gonna do, I was gonna remove, we'll remove item 7F from our consent agenda, is there anything else we'd like to remove at this time? If not, can we get a motion to approve consent agenda with all items listed, with the exception of item 7F at this time?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, uh, with the exception of 7F by voice vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
The passes unanimously?
Thank you, ma'am. Now I'm gonna look for a motion to put item 7F and get an approval with the comments made by Councilwoman Hunt, unless someone else has anything else to add and reference that. I believe it's already on the record to what she would like added.
So, I would like to make a mo, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to, um, add the comments that I read, subject to Mr. Parker's, okay, he's giving me a thumbs up, uh, to item...
7F.
7F. Um, amen, uh, minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes.
The passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 8, Old Business, zoning map change, ZMC 18-011, viewpoint 89 LLC. This will be a second reading. I believe, Mr. Parker, you're here. If there's any questions or comments, or things that have changed, if you'd like to just update the council, and reference anything that's happened since the first reading, please.
You need to go back to the first one. Uh, we've received quite a bit of, of comment regarding grading on this site. We've worked successfully with the developer, he has, on his own accord, uh, stopped grading. He was under contract, of course, with the grading contract. Uh, this is the second time that we've looked at this. Previously, plans have been approved, and, uh, like, referenced in the minutes for the 26th, indeed, a SWIP plan, uh, was completed. Uh, the developer worked with staff after receiving the stop-work order to make sure that the, uh, property was intact from a stormwater management standpoint, and they have since ceased, uh, grading of the property. Uh, that's pretty much where we stand between the 26th and now.
Councilman?
Yes, I would like to ask, Mr. Parker, have there been other incidents where, uh, we've had developers or people grading their land before they got the, uh, final plans in, the way, uh, the community has lately been complaining to us?
Uh, there are many instances in Prescott Valley where people have graded at risk. Uh, currently, there are two projects underway that are currently grading at risk. Um, the Property to the North, uh, project that has been developed, uh, that project also graded at risk. So there are many instances where a developer, uh, with an approved SWIP plan has, uh, marshaled, uh, forces to be able to get, uh, the property graded properly so that they can start to put in infrastructure. So to answer your question directly, many, many, uh, developers have graded at risk without approved, uh, plans.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker, you might as well just stay there for just a moment. So just, just to be clear, so we have a grading permit that people apply for, whether you're grading your residential property or a large property like this, correct?
We have two different thresholds for grading permits. One is at a 50 cubic yard threshold, which would be typical for grading onsite for preparation of a foundation and that kind of stuff. Then we have engineered, uh, grading, uh, that is, uh, I believe, a threshold greater than 50,000 cubic yards, where an engineer has developed that. Um, in both instances, there is a requirement for a SWIP plan, which is a stormwater protection plan, making sure that water doesn't run through the, the property and create turbidity downstream in creeks and rivers.
So, in all the cases where someone's actually moved dirt, they all have the SWIP?
Yes, they would have to have an approved SWIP plan before, uh, they would be able to move dirt.
And that was done in this case?
They have an approved SWIP plan, correct.
Can I ask if that SWIP plan was in place prior to them moving dirt?
Uh, the SWIP plan was being placed while they were moving dirt. It's not like you go in and you complete the SWIP plan, you move the dirt in order to be able to complete the SWIP plan. Uh, these, uh, folks came in, um, after I did the stop work, there was quite a bit of people that wondered why I didn't issue, uh, citations, and the reason why is because they wanted to make sure that the property could stand fallow for a period of time, so they went in and completed the necessary grading to perfect the SWIP plan.
Gotcha. I think the, the biggest concern, and I, I believe, Mr. Eversen's here, is just the optics of the whole, whole situation, where I understand that you mentioned the contract was in place to move dirt. When we were receiving calls in regards to, equipment started to show up week prior to approval. Then, on approval, Thursday night, literally the next morning, dirt starts to get moved. And I think that's the biggest concern. And I don't expect the answer from you, and if, Mr. Eversen, if you'd like to comment on this, I just know, people would like to know, understand how that whole process works in regards to, I recognize it being your dirt and you moving it, but just the whole, the order of how things worked, I just don't think worked out too good, in my opinion.
Well, and I, I can share with you that, um, as the, uh, acting, in this case, building official, because the building official was away, I do have the ability to issue permits for at-risk grading. In this instance, I elected not to. It's unusual that we would do that, rather, we would just let them go at risk, knowing that their SWIP plan is in place. And then if they, uh, screwed something up, they'd have to come back in and fix it, because we have not joined with them in approving their plan. We have other instances, though few, where people actually get a grading permit in advance of commencing grading, um, and those are fewer than the other, where people move forward, especially in this market, to try to take advantage of the market by getting the grading done so that they can install infrastructure and build lots.
I, I completely understand, time is money when they're building. I just, I think we just set a precedence where it's just been allowed, and I just, I think we just tighten that up a little bit, I think, is what we need to do for future, future problems or future issues in regards to this. I don't know, the rest of council, this is obviously just me speaking in reference to this, but if we had just taken a few more steps, a few more days, or a few more weeks, or whatever it was, then this isn't an issue, and we're literally going quote-unquote "by the book" for permit purposes.
And given the opportunity, when we start doing work studies again, I'll bring that issue back to you.
And, and I recognize in the past, um, we've been a, a pro-builder friendly environment, and that's what we needed to do in Prescott Valley. I just think we are at a point where we can change how we quote-unquote "do business" and just hold certain people accountable for the way we go about. And again, that's just my opinion, I don't know if council has anything else to add with that.
Thank you.
Mayor? Oh, sorry, Mayor. So, um, I concur with what you said, Mr. Mayor. Richard, we, their SWIPs was approved by the end of December, right?
Uh, the SWIP, well, was approved, uh, many months ago, correct?
So they could have started grading the A and B section in January.
They, they could have, yes. Um, I had reached out, as, as referenced in our conversation, when you were, uh, we were asking about it on the 26th. I did reach out to the developer, and I said, "I don't think you need to, you need to be, uh, concerned about grading in those four acres, leave those alone." The rest of the property was actually entitled in 2006, so that goes way back. Uh, the engineering, as you pointed out, was approved months prior to them beginning grading. So, yes, it is an unusual circumstance.
So, and then I think I heard you, because I listened to the minutes again from last meeting today, and I think you, I heard you say that they were just grading A, not B, is that correct?
That is correct.
And they're not grading, grading any of those yellow areas near A?
That's what I'm understanding, correct.
Okay, thank you.
What can the community expect after tonight? Is there a timeframe when we're going back to business?
Well, I believe, again, they have an approved SWIP plan. They have moved, um, albeit a considerable amount of, of earth to make this thing work. Um, these are mass-grated lots, uh, very similar to many other developers, uh, throughout the community. They should not, uh, be grading within the four-acre portion, uh, certainly, and I can verify that. But I'll coordinate with the developer. You know, I'm hoping he'll wait 30 days, uh, after this reading before he starts, uh, forward. However, I'm quite certain that they've got obligations, the developers, to the people who contracted to move the dirt and, uh, complete the work. Um, so I'll have to coordinate that with legal counsel as well as the developer.
And I, I know, Ivan, you don't like to be placed on the spot referencing this, but then why are we here? And why do we, if the developer could just be like, "Hey, we'll just go about doing our business, and we're just gonna move dirt anyway," and there's no ramifications from the town, what, what's the recourse?
Well, Mayor, you are asking a question that I'm not going to talk about, but I think it's important to point out that this is at risk. There's a difference between doing something with all of the plans in place and doing something at risk.
And then, and I just want to make sure that's clear, then. At the at-risk, if it doesn't meet the requirements of the town, then no building permits are issued, and then that's where the developer is then stuck in that position. So it is obviously in his best interest or her best interest to develop the dirt according to town rules. Is that correct, Mr. Parker?
You are correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
So, if I heard you correctly, the thing that we would like to have come back at study session is to look at the process for at-risk? Mr. Mayor, is that it?
Yeah, I believe we just go through the process again, like any good organization or company, I think, just going back on how we do business is important to come in front of council, and I think that's, at a later date, can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I will, I will respond that this is, as something that Mr. Parker has already said, a very unusual circumstance, and so, to a certain extent, you might not want to try to make policy based on this particular circumstance.
And, and I 100% agree with that, but I think it's always good for at least a, a new set of eyes to look at, at least how we do things, and make sure everyone's on the same page. And again, recognize that there are unique circumstances to every rule or policy.
And, Mr. Mayor, I agree again. And when we do that, if it's just education during a study session, I would really appreciate that. And, and to kind of talk about the water, water gra, the watering requirement and any kind of soil stabilization after you grade, before you build.
And we'll develop a, a presentation to council during work study. We'll bring in the engineering folks as well, take you soup to nuts. Zoning, then, to implementation, to issuing building permits and finals and so forth. Uh, we'll endeavor to do that. Initially, we'll paper it for you so that you see it in, in paper, and then when, I suspect we could do that within a couple of months. And then afterwards, when we start back to doing work studies, we'll bring it back to you and explain verbally how things work, uh, as questions arise from the materials that we provide to you.
Mr. Tarkowski?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I, I would like to go ahead and point something out, and that is that we have a long history of building a community, a long history of going ahead and working with our development community, and try to facilitate the managed growth of this town. And going ahead and having developers move dirt at risk, as Richard had stated, and I want to state very clearly, is something that we not only allow, but encourage. Okay? Because at the end of the day, if there is something in a final construction plan that is not approvable, uh, whether it's width of, of right-of-way, or slope, or whatever, and, uh, a contractor has started moving dirt, and they need to modify that, we have had zero problem, zero, in getting compliance with final-approved plans. And so going ahead, when you're moving hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of material, getting a head start on it is, is something that we have never frowned on, and that is what is going on in this... what is going on in this case. And I think it's very important to go ahead and point out that not only the contractor, but the developer in this case, are not doing anything out of the ordinary in our community because we have encouraged the proper regulated growth in town, it's just a question of timing. And so, I think that that needs to be very clearly set. Richard will come back during a work study, and we'll sit there and talk about it. But I can point to many projects in this community that would have been a year late had it not been for the way that we approach development in this community, and the shining light in that, quite frankly, was our hospital. Had we followed the way that other communities go ahead and do their approvals, that hospital would have been a year and a half late from the opening that it had, had we gone down the path of other communities who are overly regulatory, and that's a place we've never gone. So, I just thought that needed to be said.
And I just think at the, at the end of the day, it was just the, the at-risk part, which was confusing, at least to me it was, in regards to what a developer could do or not do at the end of the day. And I think that communication has been made clear in regards to what they are or not responsible for. So, for that, I appreciate that, Mr. Parker.
And, Mr. Mayor, one other thing I'd like to add, too, for a developer, everything is also contingent upon the weather, and this is bringing people more work and more jobs to our community as well, so please keep all that in consideration.
Thank you. If we don't have any other comments, clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 875. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 18-011, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately four-acre from RCU 70 zoning residential conditional use permit to R1L-10 PAD zoning residential single-family limited planned area development, located in Section 35, T15N, R1W, GNSRM, ratifying the earlier actions, so changing the zoning classification of the same property taken February 14, 2019, by ordinance number 856, and all subsequent actions related thereto, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, clerk. Shall this ordinance pass?
Vice Mayor and I? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lori Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to new business, number nine, the appointment of Planning and Zoning Commission, Sandra Laney. I believe Vice Mayor, you have this?
I am going to take care of it. One position on the Planning and Zoning Commission came open when Commissioner Rick Duski passed away on February 3, 2020. Rick was first appointed to the commission on June 12, 2008, to a partial term. He then served five consecutive terms, the most recent having a renewal date of October 31, 2020. The vacancy had been advertised and two applications, applicants were received. Myself and councilmembers Anderson and Grossman conducted interviews and are now recommending appointment of Sandra Laney for a term with a renewal date of October 31, 2020. I'd like to thank Sandra, and I'd like to reassure the rest of the council that she really, really is very appropriate to serve on this commission. So, having said that, I'll make a motion. Motion to appoint Sandra Laney to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term with a renewal date of October 21, 2022.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and I?
Yes.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, appointment, Board of Adjustments, Ms. Sandra Griffiths.
One position on a Board of Adjustment came open when Edmund Corrigan resigned on February 13, 2020. Mr. Corrigan was first appointed to a partial term of the board on June 28, 2018, for a term with a renewal date of January 31, 2021. The vacancy was advertised and no applications were received. Vice Mayor Lauralee Nye and councilmembers Erica Anderson and Marta Grossman are therefore recommending a person they have previously interviewed for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that would be our very own Sandra Griffiths, to fill the vacancy on the Board of Adjustment. The term renewal date would be January 31, 2021. And I want to give a real shout-out to you, Sandy, and thank you. This is a really important board, and we're delighted that, that after conversations you agreed to accept it. And I will make a motion to appoint Sandra Griffiths to the Board of Adjustment for a term with a renewal date of January 31, 2021, by voice vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and I?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
A resounding yes for Sandy.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item 9C, zoning map change, Prescott Charities. This is a public hearing. Mr. Parker, I'm opening up the public hearing as well.
Yeah, I need, yeah, that's perfect. Mayor, council, you're considering a zoning map change. This is a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing a proposed zoning map change to enable a really unique charitable organization to blossom here in Prescott Valley. Prescott Charities has made an application to rezone a portion of a commercial property, one acre total, to a multiple-family use district to allow for the construction of two approximately 5,000-square-foot buildings that'll be used to house people that are currently employed at Antelope Park in East Ridge. As you know, this facility in East Ridge caters to challenged individuals, and they have a very similar model in the city of Prescott where they have a series of homes that cater to these individuals. So, in this case, they'll be able to live very near where they work, and instead of busing them in and out of the facility, they'll be able to walk on the nice sidewalks in East Ridge to their place of business. The whole purpose of this is to try to create some independence for these potentially higher-functioning individuals. This came to the Planning and Zoning Commission approximately a month ago. It received unanimous recommendation. I will also tell you that this recommendation is consistent or congruent to the recommendations of the town's general plan 2020, excuse me, 2025. With that, I'll certainly respond to your questions or comments, but we would recommend approval.
I'll start. I think it's a great project, great location. This is truly something that is needed, and the work that they do over there is tremendous, and they should be commended for what they do, and this is, once again, I cannot emphasize enough how great of a project this is, in my opinion. Vice Mayor.
Now I can just say ditto. I am excited about it.
Councilwoman.
I talked to Mr. Newman about this several months ago, and he showed me the site, and I, too, am very excited. I love visiting the YEI location, and I want to, for our listening public, comment that it's a little bit different from other changes of zones from commercial to residential in that this one is totally registered nonprofit, and they won't be charging any rent to their residents.
Do we have any comments? Anyone calling in tonight, or this is a public hearing, so?
Nobody's called in. Let me check.
Just, let's just make sure we don't have anyone that wishes to make comments.
Mr. Mayor, while, while he's checking, I just want to add, too, this is, this is a great project. If anybody has not gone by YEI or purchased any products from them, the work that they do there is absolutely incredible. It's just an awesome program, and I'm so happy to see this project getting off the ground.
And with that being said, we're just going to give it a few more moments, wait for Mr. Tarkowski to come back, and let us know if anyone's out there that wishes to comment. With that being said, we're going to close the public hearing. Move on to item 9D, zoning map change, CMC 20-002, Prescott Charities, this is a first reading. Clerk, would you go ahead and, I need a motion for a first reading.
I'll do that. Motion to read ordinance number 876 by title oning on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage.
I'd like to make a second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor and I?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes, and congratulations.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Now, go ahead and please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 876. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 20-002, to change the zoning classification of a one-acre parcel, APN 103-05-009J, from C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Service Planned Area Development, zoning to RSPAD, Residential and Services Planned Area Development zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on, item 9E, FDP 20-001, Alliance Home Improvement Center. Mr. Parker?
Thank you. Vanna's done a really good job tonight, so I wanted to recognize her here, sitting in front of me. Proposed is approximately 35,000-square-foot hardware and lumber store, what would be immediately to the west of the Maverick that exists at, near the terminus of Lake Shore Drive as it intersects with, with Glassford Hill Road. The proposal is consistent with the approved preliminary development plan, which identified these five parcels. This is on the larger parcel, approximately four acres in size. If we can get the next slide up. This is an illustration of the final development plan. There are components of this, most of them meet the town standards. There was a minor misunderstanding. We've clarified that with the developer of this regarding multiple signage, free signage signage for this building. We've clarified that in writing to them most recently. However, the remaining aspects of this facility meet or exceed town standards, including parking configurations. Next. This is an illustration, an elevation of the way the building will look from the private street that bisects the property between Maverick and this proposed facility. Next, I think that's the last one. This is the actual elevations for the building. Again, it'll be two stories in height, less than 35 feet in total height, and the upper portion will principally house employees and office space. The lower portion will provide for open storage of lumber as well as various hardware accoutrements. We've received no comment regarding this. It is consistent with previously approved plans. I would respond to any questions you may have.
Councilman Grossman.
Yeah, I found it interesting that the side of the building that's facing Glassford Hill will be actually the back of the building. I know usually in the past, there have been questions regarding color and landscaping and all that, so I, I know this complies with it. I just found it interesting that they would have the building configured that way.
And I've seen other facilities such as this. Your point's well-taken. It has a facade facing Glassford Hill Road. I, I think this one looks attractive all the way around it, so I think that it'll be a needed thing in downtown Prescott Valley.
Councilman Packard?
Yes. This, there isn't a car wash going up real close to this thing. How's that going to affect that?
If you want to go back a couple of slides.
Wash the lumber.
There we go. The one immediately to the north of the Maverick that you can see there is the one that's designated for a car wash. You'll see a final development plan on that when they submit it, prior to any permits being approved.
Okay. I'm just curious about the traffic is going to be down in that area, but?
This is a private road. It will conserve, serve multiple commercial users. We don't anticipate a problem with driveway locations, but we'll coordinate, of course, with Public Works as these things start to develop.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
My understanding is there isn't any road directly into the neighborhood behind there.
No, that's been long determined.
And that's important for people to know.
Oh, yeah, that, that's been long determined, many, many years ago.
Right. And I just want to say, I like the tax dollars it's going to bring us, thank you.
Councilwoman Hunt?
I just want to say thank you to Ben Hooper, who did a gap analysis for sales tax leakage about a year or so ago, and I'm told that the Feins were able to use that to finalize this deal, and I'd like to give a shout-out to the Feins, too, for their marketing efforts and their expediting to get this property closed so that the new owner could take advantage of the opportunity zone incentives. And I'm very excited that we're going to have the lumber part of it for various projects, and that this is business moving closer to the Prague Horn viewpoint area, and hopefully it's going to be on a roll to get more businesses moving that way for those residents.
Yeah.
The Mayor. Councilman.
Yeah. Councilman, Councilmember Hunt brought up a very important point regarding opportunity zones, and that was created with our Economic Development Foundation, in addition to our own economic developer, Ben Hooper. So, again, it's part of that three-legged stool that we have here with the town regarding the Economic Development Foundation and our Chamber of Commerce. So, this is going to be a great addition to us utilizing the opportunity zones that are available to them.
With that being said, can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve FDP 20-001, Alliance Home Improvement Center, by voice vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and I?
Very big yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on to item 9F, Memorandum of Understanding with NACOG, Voucher Transit System. Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mayor and council. What you have before you tonight is a renewal of a longstanding 20-plus-year program that we've had, relationship with Northern Arizona Council of Government, NACOG, for their transit voucher system. Council has had a particular policy that the last many years, to fund it to a funding level of $50,000. The Memorandum of Understanding you have before you does continue that particular endeavor for discussion for next fiscal year, starting July 1st. A little background on this, this is rights for basic services for the transit-dependent community, and of course, they need to qualify through NACOG. Typically, every year, we have our NACOG representative, Leah Sikovic, give us a presentation of this year's program, some of the highlights, and the transit-dependent, meaning the clients that they serve. So, I know she's available telephonically, and I, Casey's going to queue her up so she can present the highlights of this year's program. And I think she's going to queue her up so she can present the highlights of this year's program.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. And thank you for allowing me to appear telephonically today. Give me just one moment, and we should be able to see my presentation online. Okay. Can everyone see my presentation?
Yes.
Go for it.
Okay, I'm going to roll forward, and hopefully, you can see my screen. And I've prepared this reflecting from June 2019 to March of 2020. We don't have our final figures in just yet for April. Just to give you a little bit of history of our NACOG and voucher program, we've been in partnership with the town of Prescott Valley for over 15 years to meet individual transit needs of Prescott Valley residents. Since 2018, NACOG contributes an additional $5,000 annually to help spread those vouchers a little bit further for the community. Also, as a note, due to the current COVID-19 pandemic this month, our regional director, Terry Drew, added an additional $5,000 for people to gain necessary medication and doctor visits at this time. This service is a lifeline for so many. It's the difference between gaining medical services, food, employment, or not. And so why is this service vital? It provides door-to-door services for those who cannot maybe make it to a bus stop. It provides individualized customer service. The drivers help load and unload items, help with individuals in and out of their vehicle. It's an access for all, no matter what their circumstances are. It provides jobs and revenue for transit providers. And just to give you a snapshot of how we're doing, currently, we typically have about 500 rides monthly and an average of 100 riders per month. In the month of March, we did have an increase, of course, of 125, and that was the additional capabilities with funding. Unfortunately, it's serving less than half the reported need. However, the town of Prescott Valley is the only area that provides this service to their residents. And I know that they're extremely grateful. To give you a picture of what types of services people are accessing through the voucher program, you'll see that the majority is falling with medical and basic needs, also followed by work and job search, counseling, and social services. And thought it would be valuable so that you could see some of the comments that participants that take advantage of this voucher transit system have to say. I'm just going to read a couple of them. Julie A., really, really helpful, very grateful, don't know what I would do without them. Verda D., I'm a senior, I live alone, no family, and I'm almost blind. Extremely helpful, thank you. Patricia G., very beneficial, gives peace of mind, 88 years old and don't drive. Barbara H., beneficial, as in I have the use of a power chair and housebound, a lifesaver. Don't know what I would do without them. Larry M., legally blind, used for doctor appointments and necessities. And Connie W., life is so much easier, not bound to the house, gives me some dignity, a lifesaver. I appreciate it. And with that, our sincere thanks. Our team at NACOG thoroughly enjoys participating in this program. We enjoy speaking with our participants each month, and we're proud to administer this service. And that concludes my review. If there's any questions or comments from the council.
Vice Mayor?
Many people know I chair NACOG. But what I'm going to say to you now has nothing to do with my chair in NACOG. It has everything to do with someone who's going to need this. I just don't know when I'm going to need it. Where I live, I have to go uphill or downhill, and I'm physically not able to do that now. So when I can't drive, this may be the only means I personally will have some independence. I'm extremely proud of this council for all the years that they've provided this service. The only thing I regret is that we can't give the amounts we once did because we are doing the best we can with our budget constraints, but our need is greater than the gift we're able to give.
Councilman?
I just have an administrative question, Larry, since I'm new. So do we usually approve these contracts before we approve the budget?
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. In this particular case, the contract is getting in a position to expire. We have repeatedly renewed this contract because previous councils have deemed it an essential service for members of our community. And by going ahead and approving that, then we make sure that it is inserted in the budget that is presented to you in these dollar amounts. But going ahead and having the continuity of service, and our subcontractor, NACOG, will then be able to move forward with their budgeting process because they have individuals that rely on this as well.
But most of the contracts we do after we approve the budget?
Not necessarily. Norm will be coming to you with a number of annual contracts that you will be asked to approve, even though it'll be for next fiscal year. That will be built into the budget with the dollar amounts that you end up approving. And so Norm's got about, what, 15 individual contracts that he's going out to bid on, things like sweeping and street sweeping or centerline striping or pedestrian striping. Any of those are mowing contracts, are garbage contracts. All of those things are out to bid now or will be shortly. And you'll be asked to go ahead and approve those before the adoption of the final budget.
So we know what to budget.
But what you will end up doing by approving, just like if you elect to do that this evening, then it will be included in the budget for that amount.
And then I just would like to thank NACOG for their annual $5,000 addition and the $5,000 they did this March and April.
Councilman?
It might be easier to understand that as part of the department budgets, this is not an increase to anything. It's part of the standard department budgets. So it's not something that's going to come as a surprise to us in the final budget. It's part of what they present to us each year.
Mayor, I wanted to take the opportunity to comment, too, that in these uncertain times with the COVID-19, lots of people out of work, there is a need. And what's nice about this established program that's been in place for many, many years, you heard Ms. Sikovic mention that another $5,000 is being implemented due to the current environment we live in. I have been involved with some correspondence with the CYMPO here. There's some federal money through the CARES program that could be made available for transit with any particular incentive or you need those services right away. I'm encouraged that we're currently working through CYMPO that if there's transit dollars through CARES, this is a prime program that it can be supercharged right away, the jobs are available tomorrow type of thing with funding put into place. NACOG does a great job screening clients in addition to identifying the need. And since they're already approved, quasi-government, federal-type arm and processing, they have things in place, the checks and balances, in order to put money, if it comes from the federal government, put it in place immediately and get that need to that transit-dependent community out there so they can get rides to job interviews or actually to jobs when they become available. So that's a nice thing about this program, is it could be amended, so to speak, in these uncertain times. Hasn't been done, but obviously, that's in play right now in these uncertain times.
I have a question. Who are the contracted vendors?
They qualify through NACOG, but...
Yeah, I'm assuming we use more than one taxi service or...
And then, right, it's available to just anyone who qualifies. There's quite a list. And there's some competition that goes on when a particular client calls them up, says, hey, I need a ride. There's where your competition's at. Of course, it's the local taxi community and/or the Uber or anyone that provides a ride and can bill for and meets NACOG's qualification requirements. So yes, to answer your question, there's many, six to seven qualified clients. Maybe Ms. Sikovic could help us with that.
Can she clarify that?
Okay, can I, as chair now of NACOG, this time I will accept that title? At this point, like so many other things, we're going out to bid. And there could be new ones this year from other years. And he's accurate when he says multiple. The most important thing for us when we go out to bid is we demand accountability for the usage. We don't want it abused. We don't want it improperly used because then that takes the voucher away from someone who desperately needs it. So there's quite a vetting process that takes place, and that's going on now.
I'd just like to add either put it in MOU, I believe it should. I've asked from the past in regards to a log or just a... I don't need names or anything, but I'd like to see the destinations. We saw a pie graph in regards to where people were going and things like that. And I don't know if we're relying on the vendor themselves to provide it, but I've asked, and no one seems to be able to provide this list in regards to when someone was picked up, person A, where they were dropped off, date and time. And I just think to add that in an MOU, to have that accountability, to come back to council, I think it's fiscally responsible, if we're going to write a check for $50,000, that we know that person A went from their home to a medical clinic and then back. I've personally witnessed this program be abused when people were picked up at a bar and taken home and used a voucher. So I just want the accountability as a council member. I think we should be able to see that from NACOG, and I think they would expect that as well.
So do we need to add that into the motion?
Though I don't know if you need to... I'm just saying, as it reads, without being able to... I'm sorry, Mr. Tarkowski?
There was a question over here about how we would accomplish that, and we can do that administratively with NACOG.
I see, Mr. Davis, you're taking notes on that. Yeah, if you could just put that in there, I have no issues. I believe the need is there. I just want us to have different layers in place to assure accountability in regards to who our vendors are, if it is one vendor, and the ability to track. That's all. I'd like to see that.
It's usually from three to five.
Then each vendor, if they're going to bid it, then they should be held accountable, that they will provide a log every month of person A going from this location to that location. I just think there's just too much of an opportunity to slip through the cracks here.
Mr. Mayor, would you also be interested in asking the Northern Arizona Council of Governments representative in the Prescott area that as money is going to be directed from Washington to Yavapai County, that if there are dollars associated with transportation, that she should aggressively pursue any of those so that this program, while there is this one opportunity based on economic hardship, that we would go ahead and be interested in expanding the program with outside money added to the town's contribution?
Yeah, I believe that's a good reason and a good thought process there in regards to if the opportunity persists, then we should be able to take advantage of that. And as we've already heard, that there are more of a need than we can provide to help for. If we can make that opportunity possible, then we definitely need to pursue that.
So are we ready for a motion? Any more questions? No. Motion to approve renewal of the memorandum of understanding with NACOG for the voucher transit system through fiscal year 2021 by voice vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and I?
Yes.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on, item 9G, bid award for Cleanup Day 2020. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This next item, I come before you every year. Our Cleanup Day that we sponsor every year in the spring, it's always the first weekend in May. It's staff's recommendation that we move forward with this particular program again this year. But obviously, with the current environment we're in with the COVID-19, there's been a few particular adjustments made that staff is recommending to this year's program. The flyer you see in front of you has been developed and tuned up a little bit to current standards. Would like to note that typically, we partner with the Chamber of Commerce for their very popular event, the Team Up to Clean Up. We've heard from Marnie Yule with the Chamber, CEO, that they'd like to postpone this event due to the current environment until September. So we've noted that. In addition, with the social distancing that we'd like to be mindful of, we're very confident as staff that we can operate and maintain this particular dump day. But the interface that we typically have with the charging, basically with that charge rate up there, would breach some of that particular social distancing. So it's staff's recommendation that we don't charge this year and eliminate that particular social distancing. I'd like to point out to council, too, in past Cleanup Days, we get about a 15% fare box recovery, so to speak. The events cost us around $40,000. We gain around $5,000 or $6,000 in actual money collected. So it's not a... That's the amount that we'd be particularly forfeiting, so to speak, by offering a no-charge event. But I think understanding environment, it would be very popular with people staying home, cleaning up their yards. It would be a very good event that we could offer to residents this year, even with the COVID and the social distancing and the recommendations for it moving forward in society. So we did go out for a bid for the hauling services. The Public Works staff would manage the particular site like we do every year. Everything's pretty much the same on where it's held and the allowable waste. But we did take bids for a hauling contract and Patriot Disposal, a local waste hauling and collection firm is the low bidder. And it's staff's recommendation that we award to them for the hauling services for the amount of waste that's brought in. I would like to add, too, we typically interface with Yavapai County. They haven't been able particularly to put together their full particular participation, approval of participation, but it would be open to them if they so choose, and we would keep track of the waste. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a couple, Norm. So we're going to allow county residents to bring their disposables into our town to get rid of?
Correct. We'd have...
So why do we say on here, please be prepared to show proof of residency? Is that because we're tracking where... Okay. So why are we using our money, our precious HIRF money, for county residents? The county reimburses us? Okay, cool. That was a good answer, Norm. And good answer. Then my next question is, is this really the flyer you're going to use?
Correct. That's what's been developed. Do you have any comments?
Okay, well, I don't like it. Sorry. I don't like the X's. I don't like the slap in the face to the chamber not participating. And I think it's a little wordy.
Actually, we did present this to the Chamber, and they did like the fact that it was shown postponed, that residents would know. So as far as particularly individual comments, this is the amount that we've done every year with the flyer. It contains information. We do take quite a few phone calls. We do like to make it specific enough on what waste aren't allowed so when people show up and say, don't bring your ammunition and your propane tanks, we can get bunches of them because they do charge to take them out. We don't accept them. We told you you were warned. I think it's got the right amount of detail to do allow that, how to get there. But I'd be happy to take any adjustments you'd like to make.
Did Heidi look at it?
This is the flyer they've been using for years.
I know, but it's got big X's on it. Can we just have Heidi look at it? I'm one person, though, so you guys...
Where are we advertising this at? I know it's short notice, and I'm sure a lot of people have questioned about this event just being that so many things are closed.
Well, true, it's been in a state of flux. It's been on the Public Works website because people do call. This particular one got the X's when we did here back when we sent the flyer. This particular one got the X's when we did here back when we sent the flyer. Marnie, Chamber, you have any event? We've updated our Public Works website.
Sure.
We've been reluctant to put it out like we typically do in the monthly town news. I talked to Heidi a month ago. She says, well, the governor, you don't know every week. It could get more restrictive. And you've told people you're doing it, and how do you pull it back if you put it out in the mailer? So specifically, we didn't put it in the town news because it's, could be day-to-day. I mean, this is still three weeks away.
And usually, in the past, someone greets them at the window of their car. Like, we won't be doing that interaction or that contact. They can literally be in their car with their window up and not have contact with a person if that's something that they're worried about.
You're absolutely correct. That's why the elimination of fee this year, there will be no contact needed between our finance staff, which was normally there to collect the dollars. We wanted to eliminate that contact point, and so all we're going to do is ask for a rolled-down window, are you county or town, to show us evidence we're done. And can we have Heidi look at the document? The answer is yes.
Thank you.
And we'll maintain our six feet of physical distancing, I'm sure, when we have contacts.
And even we'll take the extra, you know, a lot of times, some of the Public Works workers will help you unload a car. That's changed this year. If someone needs help, they really need to bring their own help, we'll help point them and direct them, but keep that distance and not help them unload. That's some of the changes we've implemented.
Are there questions or comments from Mr. Davis? Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid award for the Cleanup Day to take place sometime in 2020 by voice vote.
I'd like to make a second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Packard?
Yes.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and I?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
The passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on, item 10. For those of you that are at home and wish to call in, here's gonna be your opportunity. I'm gonna read the paragraph per Mr. Legler's direction every time. "Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda." I don't believe anyone else is out in the audience, but do we have... Okay, we do have a caller.
Yes, it's Robert. It's Rob Essen.
Mr. Essen, welcome.
You'll probably recognize my accent anyway. I was very displeased that I was unable to call in during item 8A on the agenda. I believe that the council made its vote based on incorrect information. There was continuous statements during the discussion that the developer was entitled to undertake at-risk grading because the developer had a SWIP plan in place. However, I hold in my hand right now an email from Mr. Parker dated March 30, 11:44 a.m., which confirms that SWIP plans are approved based on an approved FDP. There was no approved FDP. The prior FDP that had been thought to be approved became moot because the legal requirements for notice had not occurred. Consequently, it is impossible that any SWIP plan can have been approved based on an approved FDP. That's the quote again from Mr. Parker's email, because there was no approved FDP. I am very unhappy that I was told by the computer when I called in, there is someone else on the line. And there was no one else on the line speaking. This meant that I was unable to speak to council and let them know about this. I wish you to be aware of this.
Thank you, sir. Any other calls? I'm sorry. All right, Mr. Essen, thank you very much. As you, I'm sure, are aware that we don't respond back in regards to call the public. Thank you, sir. All right, Casey, we got another one? Nobody else? Again, if you'd like to call in, you have a few moments. I think if they were calling in when Mr. Essen was on it, it would have gotten a busy signal, correct? So here's our opportunity to try to reach back in. And just to be clear also, we don't take comments from the public during second readings. And that, Casey's advising, that's why he did not answer the phone, because we do not take in those calls during that time. And if, as, it would have been the same as if someone was here present and they had asked to speak, they would have been denied at that time because that is not proper procedure. With that being said, it doesn't appear as if we have any more calls coming in. If not, moving on to item 11. Can I get a motion?
I very happily give you a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Packard? Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor and I?
Yes.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes.
The passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Everyone, have a great night.